Good morning and welcome to the Society for Academic Emergency Medicine, SAM 20 virtual meeting. I am Dr. Jim Holmes, SAM president. SAM is the premier international organization representing researchers and educators in emergency medicine. In our work, SAM promotes and facilitates scientific discovery, educational innovation, and the professional and leadership development of our members. Today, we are proud to bring you a COVID-19 presentation entitled, "Rebuilding After the COVID-19 Shutdown: Choices for the Healthcare System." During the presentation and during our questions and answer session, you will hear from Dr. Lisa Maragakis, Senior Director of Infection Prevention, Associate Professor of Medicine at Johns Hopkins Medicine, and Dr. Josh Sharfstein, Vice Dean for Public Health Practice and Community Engagement, Professor of the Practice at Johns Hopkins Medicine. They will share their experiences with the COVID-19 pandemic and pathways to the future, providing important information for us as we move forward. During the presentation, you may submit questions for the presenters by clicking the Q&amp;A button in your Zoom menu interface. Questions that are upvoted will be prioritized during our questions and answer session to start immediately after our presenters have concluded. We also want to recognize several experts that are joining us online, behind the scenes, and will be helping to answer questions throughout the presentation. They include Dr. Sanjay Gupta, Dr. Jean-Sun Skofe, Dr. Henderson McGuinness, and Dr. Neha Rocker. Thank you all for your time and expertise. It is greatly appreciated. To kick things off, I'd like to introduce Dr. Rich Rothman, SAM's COVID-19 Planning Chair, to provide the opening remarks for today's presentation. Dr. Rothman is the Executive Vice Chair in the Department of Emergency Medicine and Professor of Emergency Medicine at Johns Hopkins Medicine. His research program focuses on the interface of emergency medicine, episodic care, and infectious disease surveillance, diagnosis, and treatment, with research on very commonly occurring ED conditions, including pneumonia, skin and soft tissue infections, sepsis, HIV, STDs, influenza, and now COVID. He has particular expertise in the development, translation of rapid and novel molecular diagnostics. At Johns Hopkins, he works with an interdisciplinary research team, including investigators from emergency medicine, microbiology, infectious disease, and public health. Currently, Dr. Rothman serves as Principal Investigator for the NIH NIAID Center for Excellence for Influenza Surveillance and Research, as well as a lead on a BARDA Health and Human Subjects Cooperative Agreement to study new approaches to advance therapeutic trials for pandemic response. Dr. Rothman is also one of the founding members of the SAM IMTI Group, a national network of academic emergency departments focused on research, practice, and policy on emerging transmissible infectious diseases. Welcome to you, and thank you for being here, Dr. Rothman.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes, and thank you to SAM for hosting today's COVID Talk. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Lisa Maragakis and Dr. Josh Sharfstein. As Dr. Holmes mentioned, Dr. Maragakis is an Associate Professor of Medicine at Johns Hopkins University School of Medicine, where she received her medical degree and postdoctoral infectious disease training, as well as a master's degree in public health from the Johns Hopkins University Bloomberg School of Public Health. Dr. Maragakis serves as Senior Director for Healthcare Epidemiology and Infection Prevention for the Johns Hopkins Health System in Baltimore, Maryland. Dr. Maragakis is also the Executive Director of the Biocontainment Unit at the Johns Hopkins Hospital. She serves as the co-chair of the Healthcare Infection Control Practice Advisory Committee for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as co-chair for the 2020 update of the Shea IDSA Compendium of Strategies to Prevent Healthcare Associated Infections. For research interests, integrate infection prevention, human factors engineering, implementation science, and mathematical modeling approaches to develop new interventions to prevent the transmission of high-consequence pathogens in healthcare settings. She's also joined by Dr. Josh Sharfstein, who is Vice Dean for Public Health Practice and Community Engagement and Professor of the Practice in Health Policy and Management at the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. Previously, Dr. Sharfstein served as Secretary of the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, Principal Deputy Commissioner of the U.S. FDA, and Commissioner of Health for Baltimore City. He's an elected member of the National Academy of Medicine and the National Academy of Public Health Administration. Dr. Sharfstein is also author of The Public Health Crisis Survival Guide: Leadership and Management in Trying Times, which was published in 2018. He's also the co-author of the book, The Opioid Epidemic: What Everyone Needs to Know, from Oxford University Press. The format for the session today is interactive, with questions and answers on the topic of rebuilding after the COVID-19 shutdown, choices for the healthcare system. I think you'll find the topic particularly timing, particularly relevant with the reopening that's occurred just over the past week during the SAM conference. Our experts will discuss the implications of this reopening for us as healthcare workers, as well as for our patients and the health of the public. Welcome, Dr. Sharfstein and Dr. Maragakis. Thank you for joining us.
Very well said. Thank you, Dr. Rothman. And without further ado, I'd like to welcome Dr. Lisa Maragakis and Dr. Josh Sharfstein. Thank you both for joining us today. We are very appreciative of your time, and we look forward to your presentation. The floor is now yours.
Great. Thank you both very much, Dr. Rothman and Dr. Holmes. And good to see you, Lisa.
Good to see you too, Josh, and very happy to be here. I'm very grateful to SAM for inviting us to do this today.
Yes, before we get started, I really want to thank all the SAM members who are out there, both providing critical healthcare services and leading in trying to understand how to improve our care of patients with COVID, as well as other conditions in an age of COVID. So Lisa, we've been asked to talk a little bit about what the new healthcare system might look like as it emerges from the pandemic. And I think one of the implications here is that it may not necessarily be the case that what we go back to, or what we turn on, is going to be exactly what we had left when things changed so quickly. Do you agree with that premise?
That's so true, Josh. We're asked frequently to say, when will we be back to normal? And I think, in my opinion, we need to be seeking a new normal, and that will be some combination of the things that were working well before, of course, that we must resume, and we are anxious to resume, and then blending into that some of the best practices that have been developed in this time of crisis. The fact is that we had respiratory pathogens that caused severe disease and death, and were a risk to both healthcare providers, as well as other patients, prior to this pandemic. And many of us, including Dr. Rothman and others, have done research on these, and we had things in place to mitigate that risk. But now, in the time of a pandemic and a pathogen that is potentially transmitted by the airborne route, we know that primarily it is transmitted by the droplet route, but there is still that question about airborne transmission. It has really challenged us to think about ways that we can use personal protective equipment and environmental controls to really mitigate that risk. And I think much of that can be carried forward as we think about achieving a new normal, a world in which we may have this pathogen still with us. And those of us who think a lot about infection prevention, public health, and respiratory viruses know that if it's not this one, another one will come along.
I know. I have told some people, you can tell someone is an expert in infection control and emergency preparedness when they say, you know, it could be worse, because there is, you know, there are all kinds of scenarios out there. So let me see, if we were to do this, let's say we were to go back in time, you know, three entire months, and we were to walk around the hospital together, and you were to look around, like we're sort of going back in time, you know, we're a little hazy, and we're walking around, what are the parts of the system that you would kind of go like, you know, that doesn't look so good in a COVID era? So like, for example, if we walk past just a packed waiting room, what would you be thinking? And maybe for each of these, talk about what we might look for in the future, you know, that would be a little bit safer from an infection control point of view?
It's such a great question, and it really points out that we have an opportunity and an obligation, I think, to look at our workflows and our physical spaces, really from stem to stern, in our healthcare delivery. So it actually even begins before the emergency room, or the waiting room area. And that is how we connect with our patients, how we provide information to them, answer their questions, and in many cases, help them decide whether or not they need to come in and seek care in an emergency room. But then you point out, one of the veins of infection prevention existence, and that is the crowded waiting room, and it is a very high-risk area if people cannot be properly screened prior to entering that area. Unfortunately, given the challenges of throughput, they often spend a great deal of time there. There's typically, three months ago would have been a lot of visitors there with the patients and sitting in very close proximity. So some of the things that we can do are to do a good job of screening patients as they arrive, to understand not only the triage process of the severity of their illness, but the nature of their illness, and incorporating a risk assessment so that we have a very quick knowledge of whether we think that they have something that might be communicable because of respiratory symptoms, rash, or fever, and then thinking about what kind of environmental and just controls we can put in place to separate those two streams of patients.
What about the physical design of waiting rooms? Do you think that those should be looked at as, you know, we head into a little bit of an uncertain future for the future of this pandemic?
I do, absolutely. And I was thinking this way before we had the COVID-19 situation. Actually, just a few months before that, we were faced with measles outbreaks in various locales, and Baltimore had that as well. And an airborne transmissible disease, you know, really raises all kinds of issues. Again, the things that I was mentioning, how we screen patients, just the fact that they must enter the door and walk across the crowded waiting room before speaking to a registration staff in most setups, causes some degree of risk. And during that measles situation, we were asked to close our emergency department waiting room on several occasions for two hours. So separate entrances and solving the screening process would really help.
I mean, it's pretty amazing right now, you know, states are thinking, like, should we allow more than 10 healthy people together at one time, you know, let alone allow people to walk into a room that could have like 60 people who are coughing in it. So it's really just enormously high-risk kind of setting. Okay, so let's go back behind the, you know, behind the staff line, and now we're in the back of the emergency department. And maybe if we were to go back three months before, you know, there's some PPE around, but maybe that's not high of mind for everyone in quite the same way it is today. So how would you think about the approach to PPE, you know, more generally, as we, you know, see a falling number of COVID cases, but COVID is out there, people could be asymptomatic, you know, how does that change what emergency departments and other health clinics need to do?
Sure. So personal protective equipment figures very prominently in transmission-based precautions, the precautions that we take. One, we know somebody has a certain disease or is likely to have a certain transmissible disease. But I think that this situation has certainly emphasized the need for standard precautions and for more robust standard precautions with all patients. Again, it's a time period problem, essentially. When are we first encountering the patient, and how long do we spend in close proximity to that patient before we determine what it is that they might have? And so, long before COVID-19, we were facing exposure investigations and infectious disease exposures due to tuberculosis, varicella, measles, mumps, other things on a regular basis. And despite astute clinicians' ability to sort out the risk factors for that upon history and physical, inevitably, we would have staff members who were potentially exposed somewhere in that process. So personal protective equipment, I think that what we're doing now with universal masking and face shields takes us a long way to mitigating that risk, so that even if we later decide or discover that a patient does have COVID-19 or another infectious disease, the mitigation of the risk has already happened. And then there's the issue of, I'm sorry, respirators, you know, and so, right, so more ubiquitous use of a lower threshold to use respirators, N95 respirators, or powered air purifying respirators, and certainly, you know, I think hospitals, health systems around the world are trying to increase their inventory of this personal protective equipment to make it available. And I anticipate we will be using that type of equipment much more frequently for the high-risk procedures like intubation, extubation, aerosol generating procedures going forward for standard precautions reasons.
Got it. Now, we're still behind, you know, in the staff area. There are break rooms where people congregate, there are sort of congregate areas where people are writing notes. Are those all part of the equation as you're thinking about infection control and the new normal?
They absolutely are. And so we have monitored very closely in our hospital and health system transmissions, acquisitions of COVID-19 by our employees. And unfortunately, we have had employees who have contracted the disease. When we look at these, many of them appear to be community-acquired. And what we know is that environmental controls like negative pressure rooms and ventilation, in combination with personal protective equipment, when properly utilized, seems to be very, very protective. But the workplace in a hospital is like any workplace. People congregate, they're in close proximity to each other, and you mentioned break rooms, which are a high-risk area, we have found, even with universal masking. This is an area where people remove their mask because they're drinking and eating, and those areas are often quite crowded, quite small, and people forget about social distancing. So we've had several exposures and transmissions that we think are linked to that.
So we won't go all around the hospital, but I am interested, since you mentioned that, about like some of the commonplaces where people congregate in the hospital setting, and particularly cafeteria comes to mind. I've been in some very crowded lines in cafeterias. If you think about Johns Hopkins has sort of like an eatery area where it's kind of like a crush of humanity at lunchtime. And I just wonder whether you think we're going to be thinking about infection control just from top to bottom for all the people who are in? And have you been starting to think about how the entire hospital has to be rethought?
We have been thinking about that as many businesses and retail locations, schools, and bars and restaurants are thinking through all of these same types of things. And I think for the foreseeable future, while this virus is circulating, we will have to adapt to a new normal and put in place some infection prevention interventions. My local grocery store, I thought, did a fantastic job early on as an essential retail location that remained open. I could think of a dozen things that they did to ensure environmental disinfection was occurring, to promote social distancing amongst their customers, and to protect their staff members who come in contact, obviously, with a large number of customers. So I think those types of things we're going to have to do, particularly, as you say, in food service areas and places where people congregate. It's a challenge.
Yeah, well, I certainly remember when, you know, there are big discussions about whether the food was healthy or not in those cafeterias, and now it's the cafeterias themselves. One last question for you, maybe in this, which is, can we get out of all this through testing? Is there like some quick test we could give people at the door, staff, patients, sort the people who are, you know, infected and not? Do we think that that's going to be a way to say, you know, let's use a testing upfront in order to spare us the expense and time of all these different kinds of system changes?
So testing is a real problem. As we all know, the supply chain has made it a challenge to have enough testing kits, and many places like Johns Hopkins have continued to validate platform after platform in order to make a patchwork so that we have enough to test symptomatic patients. But the question really is, if we have unlimited testing, would that alone, you know, be the gateway out of this? And I guess I would say it's a piece of the strategy, but it still will need to be combined with infection prevention strategies, risk assessment, and the types of interventions we've been discussing today. And that's really for a variety of reasons, including the sensitivity and specificity of the test, but primarily the fact that we know that it's not positive until just before symptoms begin or when symptoms are there.
And the infectious period may be earlier.
Correct, yes. So you can transmit it during that pre-symptomatic or sometimes asymptomatic phase. That's not the total answer.
Yeah. Well, I think it's going to be very interesting to see how different types of healthcare settings are able to change and still provide, you know, great care and have enthusiastic and dedicated staff. You know, I think some of the potential, you know, changes will make it, will change the workplace in ways that we don't really anticipate, and paying attention to people's ability to be happy at work is also going to be important in that, too.
It's so true, Josh. Even just having the confidence to come to work and to know that you're safe is so important in any environment, but in the healthcare environment particularly, given our patient care responsibilities. Perhaps we should turn now, and I'll turn the tables and ask you some questions from the public health standpoint, because I am quite curious about how you perceive the preparedness that has been going on for years, if not decades, pandemic preparedness and exercises and planning. And I wonder how you see the broad topic of what we have learned from our response to date, and how you think it's working and not working, and what we could do differently from our lessons learned?
Sure. Thanks so much for asking that. I think there are really two sets of answers to that. One is very narrowly focused on the kind of work that the public health community and healthcare did together on preparedness, and the other is just more generally a comment about the healthcare system. I recently had the opportunity to interview Julie Gerberding, the former CDC director, for our podcast. The episode will be out soon. It's called The Public Health On Call Podcast, if you haven't seen it. And I asked her this exact question, and I was particularly interested in her answer because she really championed preparedness when she was the CDC director for seven years. She actually accomplished a great deal of things. One of the things, for example, she did was make sure there were extra flocks of chickens around to produce the eggs for the flu vaccine. So when H1N1 hit, we had a pandemic flu vaccine quicker than ever before. And I remember that because I was at FDA at that time, and I thanked the Bush administration and Dr. Gerberding publicly for having prepared the nation for that. And I was at a congressional hearing, and I said, you know, for these chickens, which ordinarily are making eggs, if there's no pandemic, the eggs go into the food supply. I said, but for these chickens, this is their moment, you know, and they delivered, and we had a vaccine very quickly. The, I don't think the FDA congressional staff ever forgave me for that line, just as an aside. But the truth is, we thought a lot about the influenza pandemic and how to get a vaccine quickly, how to do, you know, how to make antivirals available quickly, you know, how to immunize people when a vaccine came available in roughly six months' time, you know. There was also a lot of planning around certain terrorism scenarios, like an anthrax attack, and stockpiled medicines. And there was an awareness that a respiratory pandemic could be caused by a coronavirus from SARS. There was a lot of concern about it. There was actually a lot of, you know, simulations that were done, reports that were written. But, you know, I think public health tended to, and more than, I mean, public health was, I could point to many reports, very concerned. But I think, in general, the response was very focused on the threat of bioterrorism, and to the extent we were thinking about natural pathogens, it was very much limited to pandemic flu. And I think, and you'll hear Dr. Gerberding's response to this when you listen to the podcast, but I think, you know, realizing that there really needed to be a broader response, and that the kinds of, and an example that would be around testing. I was the acting commissioner of FDA when the H1N1 started, and we authorized an EUA very, very quickly, an emergency use authorization, the first one ever. I signed for a test for H1N1, and it was built on a platform that already existed for flu. So it was very, very quick and easy for CDC to do. Similarly, we had Tamiflu. We authorized soltamivir, you know, dosing for infants as an EUA. We quickly, you know, switched the flu strain, you know, we activated the plan for the flu vaccine. All that was based on the flu, the flu infrastructure. So but none of those things are as easy these days in a different pathogen. There is no system for a rapid coronavirus test in the same way. So it had to be built, you know, based on just the building blocks, the PCR technology, and then CDC had a big problem in its lab. And so, you know, now suddenly, there are all these different, you know, places that have no tests as the virus was spreading. So that made it much harder. So, you know, all the therapeutics have to be studied from scratch. The vaccines have to be created from scratch. So it's definitely created huge, huge, you know, note of how we need to prepare better. And clearly, you know, the unappreciation of the urgent need for PPE is really, really important. You know, I would say also in that, that I don't think this kind of response was inevitable. I think even with those limitations, even with the fact that in general, we over-prepared for flu and terrorism compared to this, at least, I think that there were some major gaps in the federal response particularly that continue, and including the failure to really take control of the supply chain in a way that would really be supportive of clinical care, both for PPE testing supplies and other sorts of things up to, including therapeutics now. So that's sort of the preparedness side. But I would just shift a little and also say, we should just talk about the healthcare system. I think there was an appreciation for how fragile our systems are in the healthcare system. We had just-in-time inventory for drugs and supplies. Payment is largely fee for service. I mean, I think you'd have to give, not the people of the healthcare system who get an A for courage and, you know, incredible dedication, but the healthcare system itself, I don't think it's a passing grade for being able to be able to flex for this kind of crisis. We've had recurrent shortages of medicines. We've had terrible shortages of PPE, and the hospitals in many parts of the country and healthcare systems are just hemorrhaging money because they can't do fee-for-service care. It's been very difficult for many places to transition to other forms of care. We have not had a resilient, you know, policy system for healthcare. And I think, just like the discussion we had about walking around the hospital and, you know, going back and seeing, like, well, that can't stand anymore, that can't stand anymore. When I think about healthcare policy, I think we should have that same kind of discussion that there are some things that we did because maybe it made somebody, you know, more money in the short term. We can't do anymore because it's dangerous, really, in this kind of setting.
You raise a great point about the supply chain. To me, this was one of the great surprises and disappointments. As if facing a pandemic wasn't large enough of a challenge to be faced with such supply chain challenges was really unthinkable, the kinds of things that we have not The, the kinds of things that we have not had easy access to, including personal protective equipment. But as you mentioned, pharmaceuticals for caring for critically ill patients and even things like hand sanitizer and disinfectant. And so the very building blocks of responding to an infectious threat have been, have been missing and required innovation and, and production. I also am surprised at the amount of time that has gone, gone by before we could mount a, a solution to some of those challenges and the sort of homemade nature of a lot of the things that we were forced to, to put in place. I wonder if you have thoughts about how we could make a more robust supply chain, especially for those things we need in healthcare?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not because we don't spend enough for healthcare, you know, I mean, the United States spends so much more than every other country. And there are many other countries that have thought this to do a little better than us. Part of the answer is stockpiling. I mean, I, I certainly hope somebody is going to be stockpiling swabs after this is all done and some of these other critical supplies. But I think really the whole nature of the supply chain has to be thought about, too. And I'll just give a few examples. One would be that I think some hospitals are finding themselves in, in sort of exclusive contracts with certain suppliers and are finding it very hard to get out of that to get supplies in other areas. We have just so many middle companies in the supply chain. And I think it's important to really ask what value they bring in this kind of scenario. And so maybe there is a moment where a button gets pushed and all these contracts, you know, can't limit what people can get. I also think that in terms of the production, I think that critical suppliers should have essentially a long shelf in them, like the, the the manufacturer should be required to, you know, put on the, you know, if it's a three-year expiration, they put it on and they, they take it off with two years and six months to go. And there's a six-month supply sitting there in, you know, somewhere, could be at the factory, could be somewhere else, but it's basically a revolving supply of critical medications. And it's not the case that everybody's in just-in-time supply chain. And then as soon as you need more than what you needed yesterday, it's like a crisis. And so I, I think that that's a second important thing. And then third is I think you got to pay attention to the market, you know, and is it the case that there is an, you know, a contraction of competition, too few suppliers, too many single points of failure? So that has got to be, you know, important to look at. And then, you know, there's a sensitive topic, which I'll just mention, which is domestic production. So, you know, we saw with the initial PPE, you know, different countries saying, we're not, nobody's exporting any PPE for the moment. We're just going to, you know, do, you know, what we're going to do. And, and so in a, in a totally international system, the PPE production would just go to the right place for efficiency. But if there does need to be some core national production, then countries should probably stand that up, even if it's a little bit more expensive and people are going to have to pay a little bit more. So I think all of those kinds of things have to be on the table to, to really strengthen the supply chain.
A lot of, a lot of great ideas and, and certainly food for thought for, for many people going forward. I wanted to turn back, Josh, if you don't mind, to the idea of the healthcare delivery system and talk about some of the innovations or, or good things that may have come out of this. And one of them that comes to mind is telemedicine that has been used to really try to provide advice and handle the medical issues of patients, keeping them out of our emergency departments if they have COVID-19 concerns, but also bridging them, providing care when we are not having ambulatory clinic visits and the like. Do you, do you have thoughts about the future of telemedicine and, and other innovations like it that might change the face of healthcare delivery going forward?
Yeah, I, I think I would be far from the first person to say this has the potential to cause a revolution in clinical care. I think people are really figuring out if they don't need to see patients in person, that there are plenty of other really good alternatives. And that, you know, includes all kinds of different clinical care. There was a great op-ed in the Washington Post by this journalist, Jason Chirkas. And he is writing a book on suicide. And he said, you know, at one point, he interviewed someone who was suicidal and was told to go to the ER and had to wait for eight hours, got more depressed, decided he didn't want to, you know, see anybody and went home and just, you know, was miserable. And, you know, the, the fact that our treatment system would require someone to travel that far to be sitting in a waiting room, obviously potentially exposed to respiratory pathogens, among other things, sit in a, you know, little tiny room in the most stressful environment in the world, you know, for, for a, for depression. I mean, if you started from, you know, square one about why you would have people do that, it really wouldn't make sense. And now, of course, people are saying, don't come to the emergency room. Let's get a therapist on the phone with you immediately and let's figure out where you really are right at that moment. Spare the eight hours, spare all these different things, really be able to do a good assessment over the phone, talk to somebody about how they're doing. And a clinician, and, you know, how can you not say that's better? That's not better care. I mean, you know, more rapid, more, you know, clear assessment, the person could feel much better sooner or, you know, truly be referred to care that they actually need rather than just said, well, you know, you got to go in. So that's one example. My wife is an addiction medicine physician. And, you know, she has the ability now to start people very quickly on addiction treatment that they need and because of some flexibility that they have now. And that has actually increased access to care for patients. So I, I think that there's a lot to be said for the ability to see patients in their home environment, help them with chronic care, you know, conditions and really reserve physical exams and other in-person things for when they're needed. We're likely to go through a period where, you know, doctors aren't going to be that excited to have so many patients that they don't know how they're doing. They're really going to want to know who comes into the office, really needs to be there. And I think that creates this great opportunity to, to rethink, you know, clinical practice. I don't think that means doctors are less busy, but I think it probably means that there's a whole team of people supporting, you know, all kinds of different types of communication for different, different kinds of patients. I, I think there's, there's a lot of promise, but I do think as we do that, we really have to make sure that the reimbursement system can, can keep up with that. And I can tell you from having been House Secretary that there was a lot of concern around telemedicine. We expanded telemedicine a lot in Maryland, but there was a lot of concern that we'd get all the visits plus a lot of telemedicine visits, that if we just did a fee-for-service reimbursement for telemedicine, that it would just be massively more expensive and people would be doing telemedicine to try to figure out who they could do a procedure of questionable necessity on. And it would just be driving up costs without improving health. And so I think if we're thinking about this shift, it's important to think about the shift in payment that should come. I, I'm not, I'm somewhat lukewarm on the idea of we should just be continuing to fund every kind of treatment, fee-for-service, and just hope that, you know, it'll all sort out. I think it may be better to provide consistent, stable patients, payments to clinicians and give them the flexibility to develop a system that really works well for, for patients without kind of, you know, putting your finger on the scale and saying coming into the hospital is, is going to pay you more.
One of the other challenges I think we should talk about is academic medicine and the, the trainees that really depend upon being immersed in the clinical environment to, to learn about nursing and, and medicine and their, their specialty care. So really trainees all, all along from medical school, nursing school up through residency and fellowships. I know from an infection prevention standpoint, we take very similar approaches to protecting these individuals as we do to the, the frontline staff with regards to PPE and environmental controls and, and processes. But during this pandemic, we have excluded some trainees from clinical care, both for their own protection and also to reduce our burn rate of personal protective equipment. What, what are your thoughts about trainees and in this situation and, and going forward?
So I think that it creates an opportunity to really rethink, you know, clinical training in some ways. And I wish I had this idea, but actually it was one of our students or a couple of our students' idea. We had a op-ed contest for the medical students and public health students at, at Johns Hopkins. And here's just a, a pro tip, if you're going to tell people, you will read and give comments on every op-ed that comes into the op-ed contest, you should have a good idea of how many op-eds you're going to get before making that promise. So we had a lot of op-eds submitted, I'll just say. And I spent a good chunk of a weekend reviewing them and they were on all kinds of interesting issues. One of the ones that actually won the contest, we had a former op-ed editor from the Baltimore Sun, Judge Ed, talked about the idea of, was actually from a group of medical students saying, we should have real certified skills while we're in the hospital. We shouldn't be nothing, 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 nothing. Here's your MD. You know, that we're just totally in this student status and then here's your MD. And actually, I gave a talk at my med school graduation where I was joking, if we didn't have our MD, what would we be able to do? You know, maybe, and I said like, you know, open a sandwich shop with very good, you know, hygiene because we would wash our hands for 20 minutes before we made a sandwich, making a joke about my surgery rotation, basically. But like, you know, this, these medical students said, why don't we do EMT training right at the beginning? Why don't we have some actual certification so we could actually immediately switch into an actual role in the hospital and we wouldn't just be purely students? I think it's a provocative idea and you know, one way to think about students, people, you know, students may get trained in advanced life support or basic life support before they go on the wards, but maybe they should get some additional type of training. I think we might all agree they should get training on, on PPE and other things, but maybe there are certain roles that they could immediately assume and, and help in different ways. So that, that, that's one thought. I think the other, you know, broader idea is that there may well be times where there's, you know, students really can't be there. And we should find something else that they can do that's really contributing to the overall effort. It's obviously going to be an extraordinary situation like we're in now when students can't do it, do something. And I wrote a, a piece with the editor of JAMA about maybe we could take medical students or prospective medical students and turn them into public health workers for a year. And that would give them tremendous experience and really accelerate the work tracking down the virus and keeping it from spreading from person to person as part of a, you know, major effort on contact tracing. And I think the idea there was not just to be limited to medical students, but really the principle that rather than just say, sorry, you can't come to class, let's give them something else to do, or you can't come into the wards that is really relevant to their career, that could make them better clinicians in the future and really does matter for the response.
It's such a, such a great point. And as I hear you describe it, I think it applies not only to students, but to all of us really in, in various roles in the healthcare setting. One of the biggest challenges during this response, other than supply chain and testing, has been the staffing. And apart from being overrun in, in the emergency department, like some hospitals were in New York and, and other places, the biggest longer-term challenge I think has been not ventilators and beds, but, but staff qualified to run those ventilators and to provide critical care services and, and other things. And so many healthcare systems, including our own, have been redeploying and in many cases retraining staff as respiratory therapists, as critical care providers and changing the model of care delivery in that way. So skills-based certifications, I, I think is a very important thing to keep in mind.
Sort of increase, increase redundancy and resilience within the healthcare environment. You could have the medical students choosing, I'll be a backup respiratory therapist or I'll be an EMT or one of those other kinds of things. Interesting.
Correct, correct. Well, I've enjoyed talking with you today. I am mindful of the time and, and think maybe we'll turn it back to Dr. Holmes and see if there are questions from the audience.
Thank you both for this timely and insightful presentation. I think I might have my reimagining committee watch this video as they make their decisions on what they're going to do as we reopen our hospital. In a few moments, we will answer questions from the audience. As a reminder, for those who are attending the live session, please send your questions via the Q and A pop-up window by clicking the Q and A button in your Zoom menu interface. We will try to get as many questions as possible in the remaining time. While we wait for the questions to come in, I want to ask you, Dr. Maragakis, what developments might allow us to have a more routine approach to COVID? So that it becomes more like influenza or just one of the many medical conditions we encounter in emergency medicine?
It's a great question. COVID-19 has really taken over so much of what we think about and, and what we do on a daily basis now. But what we are, are seeing is a return of patients into our emergency departments, many of whom have been waiting to seek care and are, are sicker now. So we will need to achieve a, a new balance between COVID and, and non-COVID illness. I, I really think that having a vaccine and/or a therapy available will be critical steps to feeling like COVID-19 is, is less of a threat and more of a, you know, one of the things that, that we are looking to treat like influenza. And I guess the other thing would be if so many people in the community had had the virus and we find out that, that they have immunity for some period of time after natural infection.
Yes. Thank you very much. Question for Dr. Scharfstein from Prague area. As a Canadian, I'm wondering if the PPE situation has improved in the United States and if the government has used the Defense Production Act to improve the US supply chain for essential items such as PPE. Is it more state-specific as some states have banded together to try to help each other purchase PPE during this time?
So I think an important thing to understand about PPE as well as other very serious supply chain issues is that it's both about purchasing power and distribution. So it's not just about how you buy it, but how you make sure it gets to where it's needed to go, how there's not one place that has a whole lot of it and the other place is, you know, reusing their masks for two weeks. And so in general, the federal government in the United States has not taken on the supply chain challenge. And that, I think, is probably one of the biggest shocks to people who worked on thinking through the federal role. And the fact that we have hospitals competing against hospitals, competing against cities, competing against everybody else out there. Recently, there was just, the FDA basically said a whole bunch of masks that have come in are not high quality. I mean, all these things are supply chain issues and having a chaotic, you know, distributed approach to supply chain is, is really hurt the United States. And testing is another good example. The academic medical centers wrote to the vice president after the vice president said, seems like there are plenty of supplies. I don't know, I'm paraphrasing. I don't know why there are not more testing being done. And they wrote back and they said, you know, we could have one system that has three or four supplies necessary, we can't use it. And yet another system has two or four supplies and some other place has that missing supply, but not the other one. None of us can test. If the federal government, you know, stood up a, a logistics effort to get the right supplies to people, then everyone would know which system they're going to use. And instead, it's totally chaotic. So it's, I think there, there may have been some Defense Production Act invocation, but overall, I don't think you can give the federal government more than enough on supply chain management right now. It's one of the major challenges that has really hurt the United States in the last couple of months.
Yeah, that's very unfortunate. For our next question goes to Dr. Maragakis. Do you anticipate ED overcrowding will become an issue again? And I think many of us do. Are there any specific interventions that you would recommend for ED waiting rooms? Such as masking all patients, plexiglass between chairs in the waiting room and continuing to limit or not allow family and friends in the emergency department?
Yes, thank you for that question. Unfortunately, I do anticipate crowding and a surge into our emergency departments. In fact, I, I think I mentioned, we've already started to see the return of the patients with other medical conditions, many of whom have been waiting and, and becoming more acutely ill. So we will have, I think, increasing numbers. I'm also concerned, of course, about the reopening that we are seeing in many states and communities in this country and that that may lead to a surge of COVID-19 patients with, with that disease. So So the things that you mentioned, I think, are all good ideas and ways to mitigate the risk in waiting rooms as we have them currently configured. Obviously, we can't, you know, really substantially change the layout of our physical buildings right now unless we're fortunate enough to be building a new building right now and, and affect the planning. But I do think in the future, when we are in the position to do that, we need to think about entrances, separate entrances and ways to triage patients before they land into those waiting areas. And, and potentially, as, as the question suggests, ways to have partitions or separate areas for people to wait where we don't have large congregations of people that are sitting very close together.
Yes, thank you very much. A question for Dr. Scharstein from Edward Michelson. What is our vulnerability as a medical system from many of our critical medications and PPE coming from China?
Thanks for the question. I think that that kind of related to my earlier point about domestic production. You know, I think that this is going to be a question that, setting aside China particularly, I think it's just going to be a question about domestic production for critical supplies. And I think that we can see it's not just China that has the ability to snap to a very like, "This is our, this is in our land, this is our product" kind of attitude and under this kind of existential sort of threat. And so I, I think that probably it does not make sense for everybody to have a complete supply of everything in their own country. On the other hand, I think having some supply and some ability to manufacture in your own country probably does make more sense than we might have appreciated. And more redundancy in production will just be more helpful globally. You know, this, this is a virus that threatens all of humankind and you want to see a lot of collaboration. It's like an alien invasion, you know? I mean, we wouldn't want to just be thinking about, you know, our narrow population if, if the threat is to everybody. So hopefully, there will continue to be collaboration. But what we see in, with, going back to China is that, you know, supply chain is going to get disrupted in one part of the world. And so it probably, you know, developed for a certain reason because of the cost and the infrastructure and the environment that they had and, and, you know, that made things just so much easier to produce there. But just like other kinds of efficient systems for the usual day, they're not that resilient when you really need them and we're going to have to pay for resilience and part of that's going to be more production capacity elsewhere.
Thank you very much. We have time probably for one final question and I'll direct it to Dr. Maragakis because you talked a little bit about break rooms in the ED. So do we need to repurpose these break rooms? And what should be the solution? It's to still protect people during their breaks?
So it's, it's a large challenge. And as I mentioned, people, of course, remove their masks when they're in their break room to eat and drink. As I said, we can't really change the physical spaces that we have, but I think it is worth looking around and problem solving to see if there are other areas in which people in the emergency department can take their breaks. We're fortunate in this country to be going into better weather, so perhaps even outdoor spaces might be considered. And then even just looking at the timing and rotation of who takes a break and when that occurs so that we can limit the number of people taking a break at any one time. But it really all comes down to social distancing, especially when the masks are removed.
All right, thank you very much. And I, unfortunately, that is the last question we have time for today. Thank you again to Dr. Maragakis and Dr. Scharstein for sharing your incredible stories and for helping the rest of the country prepare just a little better for life after the COVID-19 pandemic. Dr. Rothman, do you have any final remarks?
Yeah, just very quickly, so I just wanted to thank my colleagues Lisa and Josh for, for joining. I know you're both super busy, so it really appreciate. I think the format was great, the conversations excellent. I think just a few quick summaries. One is it's clear that the shock associated with what's going on for the healthcare system is going to lead to lasting changes and the healthcare system is not going to go back to just the way it was. Some of the changes that were discussed are the changes that the way the hospital actually operates and we've discussed some of those in terms of waiting room, tele-visits and other types of adjustments. And some of the changes may be larger in terms of the reimbursement and the way the health system pays for care that hopefully would ultimately lead to greater flexibility, both for patients and clinicians. From the standpoint of the society of academic emergency medicine, emergency medicine at large and individual emergency physicians at their, at their home shops, I think there's an opportunity to take some of the difficult and painful experiences that have happened associated with the pandemic over the past few months as a transformative opportunity for changes in healthcare delivery. And hopefully to introduce positive changes for, that would include delivery of more effective emergency services. Ultimately, I think we can work together to redesign systems in our own places to be able to improve individual patient care and, and attend to the, to the health of the public at the same time. These are challenging times and I, again, just thank you, Dr. Scharstein and Dr. Maragakis for the valuable experiences and sharing your expertise with the emergency medicine community.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rothman. And thank you again to our speakers and to all the viewers for joining us today. This concludes our special COVID session for today. In a few moments, we will begin our plenary abstract presentations on SEM's YouTube channel and Facebook Live. We hope you will join us there now. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.
Hello, it's a pleasure and honor to speak to you today. My name is Srinath Ashan and I'm APD at Duke University. And I'm excited to share with you our project entitled, "A Novel Tool for Assessing the Quality of Feedback in the Emergency Room," otherwise known as FDR. So I have no financial disclosures to make. So let's jump right into it. So we know that constructive feedback is a powerful tool for impacting learning and clinical performance. In fact, it has been declared an essential component of residency training by the ACGME. In fact, the ACGME has even outlined the key components that are markers of high-quality feedback. However, a feedback gap still exists. Despite over a decade of using competency-based milestone evaluations, EM residency programs are still facing inadequate feedback. There are currently no validated tools to assess the quality of feedback to help bridge this gap and help improve the feedback that's given in the emergency department. So there's two opposing sides. One side says, "I never get feedback." You likely have heard this from your residents. The other side says, "All I do is give feedback." You can guess who that comment comes from. Yes, these words echo through despite a multitude of publications, faculty development curriculum and tools that exist. So my team set out to fill this gap. In our project, we aim to develop a feedback assessment tool to assess the quality of feedback in the emergency department. We sought to evaluate a psychometric properties and to understand the reliability and validity evidence of this assessment tool. Our overall goal of the study was to create two instruments, one for the faculty to self-reflect on the feedback that they give to residents and the other for residents to use to globally assess the feedback that they actually receive within the emergency department. So the methods of our studies, this was a multi-center study that was conducted using a red cap-based self-assessment survey of emergency medicine residents and faculty. We emailed the survey to participants at five academic centers in America and one in Thailand. So let's talk about our process. The first step was creation of the FDR survey. So we identified four feedback domains based on the ACGME framework, based on what we found on their website. And you can look more into that based on this QR code if you're interested. So this consisted of timeliness, specificity, respect and communication and action plan. Through our vigorous literature search, we actually found a fifth domain that we added, known as feedback culture. So using what we learned and the existing feedback tools, we developed questions that mirrored the domains that they were intended for. So this became our initial assessment tool, a 25-question survey with five questions from each of the feedback domains. So this led to our second step, which was the two Delphi rounds to ensure survey content quality. So we really wanted to ensure that we created questions that encompassed the components of quality feedback and that they reflected their respective domains. So this is why we sent the initial assessment tool to 17 content experts in medical education, feedback research and emergency medicine through two Delphi rounds. So through this rigorous process, we were able to ensure respondent understanding of the item as intended, item coherence to the feedback domains, thematic saturation of the domain content, as well as time duration. So using this information, we further tailored our questions again. And I really wanted to share an example of FDR after the two Delphi rounds. So we created two versions, a resident version and a faculty version using a five-point Likert scale. These two surveys actually mirrored each other in content. So an example would be, the resident version would read, "Feedback is given when I'm ready to receive it during my shift," while the faculty version would say, "I give feedback when the resident is ready to receive it during their shift." Both of these would pertain to the domain of timeliness. So once we incorporated the changes, we entered our third step, which was distributing the finalized survey via email. So we received IRB exemption and created the survey on red caps. We enrolled during March through October of 2019. So we sent a separate email to the faculty and residents of each of our enrollment sites linked to that finalized survey. So these are the six universities of my wonderful collaborators. We asked participants to take the survey only once. So this led to our final step, which was looking at the statistical metrics for psychometric validity as well as reliability. So I wanted to pause and talk about everyone's favorite topic, statistics. So I wanted to pause and talk about everyone's favorite topic, statistics. So we used the following statistical tools to evaluate our psychometric properties. So first was descriptive statistic of the frequency of responses. So basically, how the question items use the Likert scale? And did they use a wide array of responses? The second was, we used confirmatory factor analysis to really test whether the measures of the constructs were consistent with what we, the researchers, understood the nature of that construct to be. After that, we looked at one-factor model as well as a five-factor model to see if we can get a unique feedback score, but also if those questions that we developed fell into those five domains that we actually hoped for. And then finally, we looked at reliability based on the Kronebeck Alpha's internal consistency measure. So we wanted a reliability measure greater than 0.6, and that would essentially suggest that our sets of questions were closely related as a group. So let's talk about results now. So we were able to enroll 147 EM faculty and 126 EM residents out of a total of 202, 50 respectively. We analyzed the use of the Likert scale for each of the questions to see if a skew existed. So although in general, there was a slightly positive skew, likely due to the emphasis of feedback in medical education, we did see that there was a wide array of responses used on the Likert scale. So from a practical standpoint, it was really important for us to be able to generate a unique feedback score. So by analyzing the use of our data based on the one-dimensional model, we actually found that this was possible. So if you got a feedback score that was good, you know, there's no issue, that's awesome. However, if you got a feedback score that was low, the downside is that you would never know which area to work on if we only used the one-dimensional model. So this is why it was important for us to use a five-dimensional model as well, so you would know which area was strong as well as weak. So our factor analysis models show that the questions tend to be structured into those five domains just like we hoped they would. This meant that the questions within each of those domains actually are perfectly overlapped in their content. So this is great news, because it really confirmed that statistically, our questions could be grouped in the five feedback domains that we intended. Additionally, all of the factor analysis models showed adequate indicators. Finally, let's talk about reliability. So we evaluated the domains for reliability. We wanted to know if people tend to respond to questions in the same way. An example would be on timeliness. If they answered one timeliness question positively, ideally, all of the questions within that same domain should be answered similarly. So remember, the Kronebeck Alpha was the measure of reliability, and we wanted it to be greater than 0.6. So for our study, we actually found that this was 0.92, so we were really happy about this. We also found that this was strong for all of the other five feedback domains, as you could see here on this figure. So, you know, we all know that in feedback, there's really not one right way to give feedback. Instead, there's one way to do it, and then the other way, and then the other way, and then the other way. And if I ask for a show of hands, I bet that each of you has your own technique and the style of giving feedback. So really, the lens that we look at giving feedback is often colored by the perception of the resident and the faculty. However, this feedback gap really exists, and it's due to a lack of a validated reliable tool to assess for the quality of feedback within the emergency department. And this is where we envision using this tool. So there is this tug-of-war on feedback between the resident and the faculty. We created this novel tool to assess the quality of feedback within the emergency department. It's a tool that the faculty and residents can take to give you a sense of their effectiveness of giving feedback. This helps to bridge that gap of inadequate feedback by being a reproducible, valid, reliable, and objective measure for understanding the feedback, and it's tied to those five specific feedback domains. So limitations of our study include sampling bias as well as the need for applications. And so this really leads to our next steps. So we would like to conduct further studies for replication to further evaluate other types of psychometric properties, and then also to obtain a wider population sampling. You know, providing an individual score can help tailor guided opportunities for faculty to improve feedback. You know, there's also this other potential use in which the domains of feedback can be looked at based on an emergency medicine program to see which areas you're strong or weakened. So this has a multitude of scholarship opportunities that we hope to grow on. So in conclusion, FDR is a novel tool that we're really excited to share with you. It's a tool that's reproducible, valid, reliable, and provides an objective measure for understanding the quality of feedback within the emergency room. Furthermore, it's a novel in its utilization of questions that can be actually mapped out to those five feedback domains. So our hope is that we can use FDR on an individual level and systems level to really identify which domains of feedback you're strong or weakened, so that targeted educational interventions can be used. So we look forward to sharing more about FDR with you in the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, my name is Andra Blomkant. I'm from the Stanford University School of Medicine, and I'll be presenting the abstract, "Wellness in Academic Emergency Medicine: An Initial Exploration of the 2019 Survey of the SAEM Physician Membership." I wanted to thank my co-authors for their contribution to this important work, and to also thank the program committee for selecting this abstract. I have no relevant disclosures. For background and aims, we know that wellness is a large problem within healthcare providers, particularly in emergency medicine. Wellness within academic emergency medicine is not well-known or understood. We sought to survey the emergency medicine trainees and faculty using a standardized testing instrument. The SAEM Wellness Committee evaluated and then added additional questions pertinent to the academic environment. The survey we used was the Stanford Physician Wellness Survey, originally developed by Tate Shanafelt and colleagues, and has been used on an annual basis for the Stanford faculty. The survey is comprised of approximately 20 domains, and each of those domains has between four and eight questions. Domains may include professional fulfillment, burnout, interactions with the EHR, self-compassion, gratitude, and expectations of the working environment. There are two significant indices for discussion in this survey. One is professional fulfillment, and the other one is burnout. These are calculated and have been previously validated based on specific questions throughout the survey. So for most of our data, we will describe either professional fulfillment or burnout as an outcome. We hypothesized that professional fulfillment and burnout would differ in academic emergency medicine from that of previous studies in overall emergency medicine provider populations. Of a possible 5,771 respondents, 1,046 participated, which is 18% of that population. 43% were female, and 23% were non-white. When breaking up the data by rank, we have representation from residents, fellows, and assistant professors, associate professors, and then full professors, as shown. In regard to residents, we're here looking at two distinctions between professional fulfillment and burnout, both by gender and by race. And whereas previous studies have demonstrated significant differences in professional fulfillment and burnout between these categories, we saw no differences in professional fulfillment and burnout between genders or race/ethnicity. We found similar observations when conducting the same analysis with faculty. We found no difference in professional fulfillment and burnout between genders and race/ethnicity. We then sought to examine specific academic questions that were entered by the Wellness Committee. The first one was for residents only, and that included, "Residency Training Is What I Expected." And we can see that for each Likert scale point increase, that there was a significantly higher odds ratio of professional fulfillment for residents. This one is for residents and faculty, and discusses change in career. The specific question was, "I have seriously considered pursuing a job outside of clinical medicine." Both residents and faculty showed an increased odds of burnout for each Likert point scale increase in their response. For this question, also pertaining to residents and faculty, "Working When Sick." The question was, "I regularly work clinical shifts when I am sick." This was associated with an increased odds of burnout for both residents and faculty, but no difference between residents and faculty. The next question is, "The Field of Emergency Medicine Is What I Expected." And this is showing the odds of professional fulfillment. And we can see that both in residents and faculty, the odds of professional fulfillment are higher with that response. However, once again, we noticed that there are no differences between residents and faculty. This next slide examines rank and gender between professional fulfillment and burnout. We've divided the population by resident, junior attendings, which includes assistant professors and fellows, associate professors, and then full professors. Males are represented in gray, females are represented in red. And while we can see here that, in general, a trend exists that males report higher professional fulfillment and burnout, there are no differences among these groups for both rank and gender, for both professional fulfillment and burnout. The closest one may be the one that draws your eye as professor in terms of professional fulfillment, where it appears as though males significantly are increased over females. However, the low number of respondents within the female professor category, a total of only 18, makes that a non-significant value. A few other faculty observations regarding specific academic questions. For each Likert scale point increase in "Seriously Considering a Job Outside of the Academic Environment" was associated with a lower odds of high professional fulfillment. Likewise, each Likert scale point increase in "I Have a Clear Understanding of the Promotion Process" was associated with a 68% higher odds of professional fulfillment. In conclusion, emergency medicine providers and trainees are at a high risk of burnout. Previously shown differences in rank and gender are not apparent in this cohort. Likewise, previously shown differences in race and ethnicity are not apparent in this cohort. Lastly, meeting expectations of residency training in the field of emergency medicine was associated with significantly higher professional fulfillment. As for limitations, the survey study faculty represented a single society membership, which may have self-selected to be in academics. Academic questions that were added by the Wellness Committee were evaluated but have not been validated. There was somewhat limited survey participation of 18%. Next steps will include exploration of an academic wellness index similar to professional fulfillment and burnout, and further exploration of specific subgroups for themes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for this opportunity to present our research pertaining to young febrile infants. We are very appreciative of the efforts taken by SAEM to sustain and highlight research activities during these unprecedented times. Our research was supported by several federal grants and PCCAR. The prevalence of important bacterial infections in febrile infants in the first two months of life is estimated at 8% to 10%. Most are due to urinary tract infections, and the rest due to invasive bacterial infections, or IBIs, defined as bacteremia and bacterial meningitis. Experts recommend the use of various risk stratification algorithms in the evaluation of young febrile infants in the first two months of life to identify those at risk for important bacterial infections. Patients with positive urine analyses are at an unknown risk for invasive bacterial infections, especially bacterial meningitis. There are benefits and drawbacks to performing lumbar punctures in febrile infants. There is a balance between the benefits of knowing for sure whether the patient has bacterial meningitis by performing lumbar punctures on every febrile infant versus the risk of failed or traumatic lumbar puncture, or iatrogenic complications, prolonged unnecessary antibiotics, not to mention parental anxiety and societal costs. Our prior work has demonstrated the substantial practice pattern variation in performance of lumbar punctures and hospitalizations in young febrile infants. The Y-axis on the graph represents the proportion of febrile infants who received lumbar punctures on the left and those who were hospitalized on the right. The X-axis represents age by day of life until 60 days. The black arrows represent cutoffs at first and second month of life. Lumbar puncture and hospitalization rates were consistently 90% or above in the first month, and these rates dropped to less than 50% in the second month across the 26 participating PCCAR sites. Recent data estimates the overall risk of bacterial meningitis in febrile infants with positive urine analyses at 1% in the first month of life and substantially less than 1% in the second month of life. However, the evidence is still not definitive, because prior study designs have either been retrospective in nature or have used varying definitions, and have had selection bias as they included only those infants that had lumbar punctures performed. The objective of our study was to determine the prevalence of bacteremia and bacterial meningitis in febrile infants in the first and second month of life with positive urine analyses. We performed a planned secondary analyses on data collected for the parent study, which was a prospective cross-sectional study of febrile infants two months and younger and in PCCAR EDs from 2008 to 2019. We included infants less than 60 days of age with fever, which was defined as erectile temperature of 38 degrees centigrade measured in the ED or in the refereeing center or at home, and who were being evaluated for bacterial infections with a minimum of blood culture. For this analysis, results of the urine analysis had to be available for the patients to be eligible. We excluded critically ill appearing infants, those who had received antibiotics within 48 hours, and those with histories of prematurity or complex-associated disease. We collected data on patient demographics, including the Yale Observation Scale score, which is a quantifiable score for patient appearance. We collected data on screening tests in the blood, including the white blood cell count and the absolute neutrophil count. We collected results of the urine analysis and CSF analysis and cultures from blood, urine, and CSL. Serum procalcitonin were analyzed, if available. Patient's treatment and disposition were recorded. All febrile infants who did not receive a lumbar puncture and who were discharged from the ED received a phone follow-up to determine bacterial meningitis status. We defined urinary tract infection, bacteremia, and bacterial meningitis using widely accepted definitions. In the main analysis, we compared patient demographics, screening biomarkers, and prevalence of bacteremia and bacterial meningitis between febrile infants with positive versus negative urine analysis. We report our results stratified by two age cohorts, the first and second month of life. We performed multivariable analysis to identify predictors of bacteremia and bacterial meningitis in febrile infants with positive urine analysis. We enrolled approximately 7,400 febrile infants prospectively in the parent study. 97% of those infants had a urine analysis performed and were thus eligible for this study. Approximately 1,000 infants, or 15% of the cohort, had a positive urine analysis, and approximately 6,000 infants, or 85% of the cohort, had negative urine analysis. The prevalence of important bacterial infections stratified by positive and negative urine analysis are shown in the bottom row boxes. Of note, there was substantially higher prevalence of urinary tract infections and bacteremia in the positive urine analysis group. Infants with positive urine analyses were more likely to be younger and have higher mean temperatures. There was no difference, however, in the Yale Observation Score compared to those with a negative urine analysis. Additionally, infants with positive urine analyses had higher mean values for the white blood cell count, absolute neutrophil count, and the serum procalcitonin levels, and were more likely to be hospitalized. This slide reveals the distribution of urinary tract infections stratified by age. As expected, nearly 50% of febrile infants with positive urine analyses had urinary tract infections compared to less than 1% with negative urine analysis. These results were similar These results were similar between the age cohorts. Overall, the prevalence of invasive bacterial infections were higher in infants with positive urine analyses, and these differences were similar in both age cohorts. Amongst the invasive bacterial infections, bacteremia rates were higher in infants with positive urine analysis in both months of life. As expected, the overall rates of bacterial meningitis were low in the entire study cohort. Off note, among the febrile infants in the second month of life with positive urine analysis, none of the 697 febrile infants had bacterial meningitis. Our prior research has identified procalcitonin as an important predictor for bacterial meningitis. And since procalcitonin was variably analyzed across the PCCAR EDs, we developed two multivariable models to identify predictors for invasive bacterial infections in cohorts with and without procalcitonin. Among the 470 infants who had procalcitonin levels performed, only young age and serum procalcitonin were independent predictors of bacteremia and bacterial meningitis. Among the 1,047 infants who did not have procalcitonin levels performed, young age, temperature, and absolute neutrophil count were independent predictors of bacteremia and bacterial meningitis. Our study had some limitations. We enrolled a convenience cohort based on research staff availability. However, in a separate analysis, we did not find any differences in bacterial disease prevalence in the missed-eligible cohort. Overall, there were very few cases of bacterial meningitis, which is reflective of the prevalence in this age group. Finally, PCCAR EDs represent specialized pediatric centers and may not represent care provided in other settings. In conclusion, the prevalence of bacteremia is higher in febrile infants in the first two months of life with positive urine analysis compared to negative urine analysis. Therefore, all febrile infants in the first and second month of life need blood for biomarkers to identify those at higher risk for bacteremia. However, there were no cases of bacterial meningitis amongst the approximately 700 febrile infants in the second month of life with positive urine analysis. Therefore, lumbar punctures are typically not necessary in well-appearing febrile infants in the second month of life with positive urine analysis. We are presenting the validation of the previously developed PCCAR febrile infant prediction rule, which includes urine analysis later during this meeting. And we plan to undertake implementation and wide dissemination of the prediction rule in the immediate future. Finally, I want to thank my co-principal investigators, Dr. Scooperman and Dr. Ramilo, and all PCCAR site investigators, research coordinators, and the data center for their help during this study. Thank you.